I will call the work session of the Illinois School District one day to order. I move that the board adopt the superintendent's recommendation that Jacqueline Hopf was be dismissed from the department with the district on the grounds of insubordination and elective duty effective October 24th, 2023. The move by me and seconded by Erica that the board adopt the superintendent's recommendation that Jacqueline Hopf was be dismissed from the department with the district on the grounds of insubordination and elective duty effective October 24th, 2023. Rose, can you please follow roll?
Jane, Kim?
Aye.
Erica Lopez?
Aye.
Katja McGuire?
No.
Uh, Nancy Thomas?
Aye.
Lonnie Ward?
Aye.
Is that Pam Halla?
Aye.
Mark Watson?
Aye.
Agenda item outside of that is discussion of our school calendar.
Thank you, everyone. We're, uh, I know we're on a, but the adjusted schedule, so thank you for, uh, I will probably reach with things quite quickly because there's going to be time for you to do some group work together to review things. So, um, I just want to talk about like our considerations for drafting the calendar and we're looking at four different calendars tonight. We're looking at a pre-labor day start and a post-labor day start. This is based on a discussion that you had last year and you wanted me to bring forward to this year. So I just want to kind of anchor everyone in these considerations as we adopt, um, prepare calendars that are either pre or post-labor day. So it's ideal that we have a hundred and seventy three student instruction contact days to meet the Division twenty-two requirements. That allows for some flexibility in the calendar, especially if you're implementing makeup days. We also need to meet the hundred and ninety-one licensed contractual bargaining agreement obligations, uh, that we have with our union. So, uh, I heard eighty-six, those are working days with five paid holidays. We also look at the classified calendars, the super tech calendars and the advent calendars to kind of determine how what, um, those, uh, we have to take into account those things as well. And we want to make sure that we have a balanced first and second semester. So we don't want to have like a hundred days in the first semester and only seventy-three days in the second semester. We want to try to balance that out as best we can. And, um, last year we had a long discussion about contiguous dates for winter break. There was a, a strong desire to have full weeks off. And so that is something that I tried to put into play to say, graphic these calendars as well as for break. And then we want to also include all nationally recognized holidays and mindful religious observations and holidays as well. So post-labor day considerations and the past practice that we have done is something that we all know and kind of have history with because this is something that our, our families are used to. Historically, these academic calendars were built upon a farming schedule, um, and also the weather patterns that generated that schedule. And then as we looked at the twenty twenty-two survey results, we had, um, over sixteen hundred and, um, over nine hundred staff give feedback in regards to their aversion to a pre-labor day start. We did have fifty-four percent of those families not prioritize a pre-labor day start at that effort. But something that I've heard from you is that if we're going to make this change, then we need to have advanced notice. And that is something I wanted to make sure that we were doing. And that's why our conversation is happening this fall versus, um, in the winter after the winter. So for our pre-labor day considerations, um, something that we need to consider are the student instructional impact components that allow for some additional days for, uh, advanced placement, international background, ACT, SAT and LPA testing. And then one of the things that we've been, um, having conversations with other HR directors and officers is the consistency of calendars across the metro area. So, um, I have learned that thanks, Beaverton and Mendel, Portland, Sherwood, Westland, Wilsonville, our districts that have adopted pre-labor day start. And then some are also looking at a two-year adoption cycle so that our families will know what that schedule is, uh, for cutting. And then one of the things that we really need to consider is that, um, we have students, um, in the Washington County area that receive services at Northwest Regional ESD, and we want to schedule, uh, they have asked for a schedule that is comfortable for across the district. So we don't have people starting at different points of days as they need the services forced, um, especially our students who receive special education services. And then another thing that I have a conversation with was with our athletic directors around like the alignment of activities and athletics and the sport scheduling starts in, um, typically August. And then leadership opportunities for students also start earlier before school starts. And so while we, you know, an immediate change was not preferred, we want to think about making this change far in advance and consider that. And so just to give our families and our staff considerable notice. I also want to say, if this is something that the board determines, that we're going to have to have a very tight communication plan for our staff or families so that we are communicating those pieces early, uh, this is early winter and this spring. And so that we can start to prepare those things and make adjustments accordingly to some of our professional development and in-service requirements. So now comes the fun part. So what I've done is I have created a little opportunity for you to go ahead and give me some feedback on what you like and any questions that we have. And you have hard copies because, um, I, um, think it's good to lay out and see and look at all of the four calendars. Those of you that are, um, online, hopefully, um, Rose has access to that. Christina and she will give you access and you can make comments for to. So what I'd like to do propose today is also some of our members can be a support. So, um, I would, I just kind of had to adjust my schedule a little bit, so I'm going to mind. I'm also including our student reps as well. So, um, Michelle and Jordan, I'm going to have you work and support RJ and Mark. So you guys are going to come and gather your things here. And then Andrea will be with Kathley and Patrick.
I'm going to, I'm going to stand up for teaching practices. We're coinciding, I'm going to have you with, um, Alana and Nancy. And I'm just going to, I'm going to use that and support her. Mark, you are working with Michelle and Jordan.
Who else?
Um, RJ.
Did you get, did you assign any of that?
Yeah, yes.
Actually, you want to go right here?
So, we're right here.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, you have my friend from Tuscaloosa?
Yeah.
What's my, what's my happen to it?
You left him over there by your bucket.
Thank you.
But like I understand.
I think you can hear about the August twenty-seventh and then the first day or any sort of, right? One, when there's six, seven, nine, eight, as all students. And because I mean, I know I saw it. For the first year, yeah. Better one. For students, I'm sorry, Tuesday, the teachers are going to be there. Going back to school, yeah, still right here. It was the first year. Yeah.
I understand this more like it ends here.
You know, it's covered in here.
I'm going to give you just maybe about three more minutes. Sorry, this is. But it's a workaround and sure out pretty much college students. Twenty-five minutes. That's the next one. Yeah. So actually, you're. Right here. Yeah. Yeah. So it's all, this is kind of like. Here, as opposed to doing all of that in a term of hours, which is actually the first case that, uh, so you kind of, uh, in service.
I think that would be for a family that's in service.
So now if you have like all of the, first day and then you're around, right? But you'll stay. So that's what's. A hundred or something. What's the first thing you get that like? No, it isn't. Reconsidering the important part. So. Yeah. Yeah, I think it's. Sorry. Can you have about thirty seconds to round the outline? Sorry, Jess. So I tried to, I was like, pre. Bargaining. They may be. That's true. Okay. All right. Time is up. Sorry. But, um, what I'd like to do is do a workaround and if there's any comments or questions from your group that you're working with that you want to share out, please feel free to share out those questions. Uh, because others may be thinking the same thing. And what I can answer tonight will absolutely answer if I need to follow up in any manner. I will. So let's go back here to Natalie. Any, any feedbacks or questions?
There's a lot of really good reasons to study. There's some reason members aren't sure. I think it's going to be a result to using our community. There's a lot of. Just I've seen around our state and state, uh, battles. That people are starting to, um, us.
Yeah.
So it's talking a lot of conversation about questions that can be answered. They're not like. Um, but I think with this change, you'll solve a lot of questions. And you can't resist it.
That is your turn. All right. RJ and Michelle?
Um, well, just like, so how, what Halle said, I agree on. Can't please everybody, no matter which decision that we made. I like how post-labor day is just the same, what we've always been used to. As someone who's been in the school district for twelve years, it's just, it'll just be another year. If we do pre, I, I like how, what you're talking about, students have, uh, three more days of contracts. So it'll work well in June. Just the problem, I was just questioning if I have problems with starting a little earlier just because change is always difficult, even if it's positive or negative. Just the fact that there's change is going to be. Time will tell what the student will see when they see, uh, or how they'll feel once they see that school starting earlier than over the past few years.
Yeah, I think those are really good points. And I think that like, I kind of, when we talked about, we're going to have to make a lot of, you want to be king if that is determined. And we're going to have to think through all of those things and what this coming year might, that's why it's important that we do per the pre-labor adoptions or proposal that we do it two years, not just some time.
Um, let me specifically talk to how I've talked about, um, how early college already to start three weeks, I think, after the regular HSD start date, September twenty-eight. And then so the post-labor day start date would just create more of a dapper, you know? And something else is the graduation. Like I know this year we get out of the promise because these people are coming after two weeks, so we'll have finals after we walk. So that being longer, yeah, actually change that two places in one. Well, same as me, knowing that there's still two months of school and then finals. And then something else I didn't like about the post-labor day start date is that school stuff ends in June. It feels a little like disproportionate. Because when I was in high school, we started August, we started August fourteen, but we got out like end of the day. So it felt not as long, but June makes it seem like this was a little.
Nancy also have a. Sure.
Well, with regards to a pre-labor day start, um, there, the, part of the reason why we're having this discussion is because we talked about big neighbor alignment. I like where you put that. Um, it's really important. We don't think about it as an individual, but when you're part of the school board and you're part of a community and you're very aware of the rest of the community around you, the idea that we were not in line with Beaverton really kind of called us all off guard. We're like, eh, hadn't thought about that. And you have, you know, I mean, it was, it was a lot of the things. So it's, so when I'm, we say big neighbor alignment, it's not that we're trying to beat Beaverton. Nope, don't want to be it. I want us to be proud of the HSD, but in this case, alignment with them will help a lot of things. Logistic, facilities, it, it helps a lot. So big, big alignment with the neighbors is really important. And additional, um, if we, if we stay where we are, which we're really good at doing, um, what we do is we stay aligned with our smaller neighbors and, and we all just stay where we are. And, and we kind of stick, we kind of stay with this quote unquote agrarian schedule that we had that really isn't applicable anymore. And it's just, it's just something we've always done. And so I appreciate the fact, the piece of wisdom that I was given is that the only thing that you could depend upon is change. And it's time for us to change.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. I think, um, I think one is that pattern I started first with like change needs to happen, but it's a difficult thing for people to understand. Um, and so selfishly also as a provider of after-school programs, I'd be like, well, the folks figure we may do a little bit more than that. You know? But I get, you know, the change, you know, we're talking, it, it, it makes sense, you know? When I think about like what else the rest of the country does, you know? Usually they start before we do and we start later. But aligning with what Nancy was saying, that Beaverton has it, it was weird and odd that, you know, we weren't aligned, especially when it comes to big districts like that. So I think that was four.
Yeah, I, I like the pre-labor day start since, yeah, like to your point, August fifteenth, that most, a lot of us are, more Oregonians are not from Oregon than you think, right? Fifty-seven percent of Oregonians are not from Oregon. Uh, so having my education experience being in different places, uh, it was always weird to me when my kids started at labor. Why are we not, all my Facebook friends come see first day of interest school? Why are my kids not in school? Uh, but aside from that, yeah, like, uh, it makes sense for us to align with our neighbors. On the specific stuff like, um, wonderings, uh, it's the twenty twenty-four, the first week in August, why that Friday off? Like, why go three day family engagement day? I love that we, love that we're keeping family engagement day no matter what. I do love that. We've heard nothing but great feedback about that. Why three days and then Friday off? And then I guess in twenty-five, it's Monday off?
Yeah, I think one of the things that we had to consider was like how the year would end. So if we have a school day, then we're going to have to take away a school day at the end of the year. So, um, one of the things that we had conversations and feedback was, uh, we also had historically that Friday off, um, with, um, meeting partners in terms of like just how we've done things. So that was something we took into consideration in terms of that feedback that we received from them. And, um, we wouldn't want to end school on a Monday for students. So that would be kind of an awkward schedule. So if you take, um, you know, that Friday off. Yeah, we have this, we have to have Monday as our last day and it would seem like we probably have a varied, like, attendance of students.
Calendar discussions in general, I like that all of the calendars have us doing our conferences in Thanksgiving week. I know that's not, that is newish for us. Uh, I like that we're able to consistently keep that no matter how we draw it. I, on the pre-labor day start, I like that, uh, sort of easing into things are different, things do, you know, change. We aren't being able to somehow include the Friday before winter break. So I get, uh, so while we can start differently, you get a little bit of, it's not just the two continuous weeks. You get an extra day there for winter break for families who want to make plans to go to town or, or plan a holiday. So, um, I do like, like by twenty twenty-five, I know the calendar changes all the time or whatever. Sort of like Cali on, so I like, I like how much earlier we get done in June. Like, I, I get that parents in Oregon are very used to ending very late in June, but obviously it wrecked me. I like that we're getting done with the pre-labor day once before June. So those are, those are my no mistakes from my first pass.
Um, I would just add, um, why not two weeks earlier? Like, can we just end in, that would be nice. So one for hand, just a one very. And, um, my other wondering was that last day is like on a Tuesday?
Yeah.
What if we push it out to be a Wednesday and not a non, a non-student contact day? Somewhere like in April, October, where we don't really have a lot of time, like that, a lot of.
Yeah, that's something that's certainly.
And I like the two-year adoption.
Lonnie, did you want to add anything?
No, I think everyone, um, from what I've heard has covered it pretty well. I mean, I like the balanced days, um, for the pre-labor day. I know that a lot of families from your slide presentation, a slight majority didn't want to move to that. So definitely a consideration, um, and I certainly like the two-year scheduling.
Jane, sorry.
Yeah, I think nothing, nothing new to add. Um, again, I think I, though we are more accustomed and used to the post-labor day start date, I, I think what you mentioned in the slide of, you know, so long as families have advanced notice to plan, I think that a pre-labor start day, you know, some of the reasons I like it is because it aligns better with, you know, our districts, especially if other districts are, are already, um, moving in that direction or are excited to move in that direction. I know that we have some, you know, teachers who have, um, kids who have already attended schools in other districts or, um, or vice versa. So, um, like that and, um, yeah. You know, more inclusion of, of total student days and first and second trimester and we'll leave an alignment with sports and leadership activities taking place pre-labor day. I think there's really, really bad support now.
Thank you. All right. So, uh, my last slide is in terms of next steps. Um, I'm taking what you've said and, um, I think it's important that we bring, uh, first reading forward next month so that there could be an adoption for, uh, December so that we can get this out, uh, to our staff and community. And so I would propose a pre-labor day, two-year draft based on what I heard from your feedback.
Yeah, we're making the change. I like the idea of acting early, giving people as much notice as possible. So we adopted two-year cycle. We don't even talk about this next year, we just wait?
Yeah, we wouldn't be talking about it.
No better. All right.
All right, I will collect all of your materials. You didn't use the lecture.
Thank you.
Thank you. Put everything together, set it right there. Yes, I feel like I. All right, um, we're gonna talk about bargaining and, um, we're gonna talk about. Um, we're getting some volunteers from the board to support our license and classified bargaining team, uh, for the district. And so, uh, we're going to be starting in January slash February with our bargaining. And, um, I know it's probably something that's popping into your mind, it's like, what is the type of this? So, um, typically from our past history, uh, we have started in January and we usually, uh, typically go through the end of the school year, take a summer break and pick it up again in the fall. We're hoping that we can finish in, you know, a reasonable manner, but, um, that is the kind of timeline. It's based on kind of where we are, um, towards the end of the calendar typically. Um, but planning sessions are usually thirty to ninety minutes a month depending on the needs. And so, um, that's something that you'll be working with the HSD team on. When it comes to the bargaining sessions, that's a whole group with the HSD, HC and HEA. And, um, those kind of depend on like an eight to twenty hours a month, maybe a little more, maybe a little bit less, but I was trying to give you a range. Um, so it is a, it is a full commitment. So, um, would love to have one person for license, one person for classified. And then, uh, if we have a substitute, um, that would be also helpful.
Yeah, I guess traditionally we'd have one board member volunteer to be on the classified one board and then an alternate can be sort of.
Yeah.
Excellent.
That's great.
Basically, so is anybody of interest in serving on a bargaining committee this year? And if so, which one? You think?
Whoever y'all want to send me.
Done classified, like did a full session on classified bargaining my first time. Second time I believe, the first meeting, one or two was with Martin Graham and then I filled in for the rest. So I've been classified twice. So if I, if I went again, if I'd be curious to switch over to licensing, but, you know.
That's why I, so I was thinking that, um, I would like to, um, volunteer for the license staff. Um, I think we would absolutely need a backup for me. I have a little guy, a digital giant who's graduated. And getting ready for world championship.
I could be the alternate. So you could be classified, Nancy could do license, I could be the alternate, I suppose.
I could be alternate or classified.
Oh, you better, all right. Cool.
If you're comfortable with that, I could be, I could be an alternate backup if you need one to. What if, what if you want to or not?
I come from the idea like divet on classified Nancy on licensed and then several of us wanting to jump in if anyone have a conflict, you sort of control that. And, and I guess from the board perspective, oftentimes, uh, after a session or whatever, we'll give an update and the board member would, you know, or just give a little heads up of, for those of us who worked in the room, just give a little heads up like, hey, this is what we're working on today or whatever. And so it's just, in addition to the time commitments in the license, in the negotiation room, it's, you know, a quick update to the board, but nothing usually makes sense.
I appreciate everyone's willingness to support this work. It's important and, um, I think it's also for our meeting partners here.
Cool.
Thank you. We'll be reaching out.
All right. Uh, our last agenda of the board session, um, we have to do a superintendent evaluation every year. And we had heard that our consultant was not going to continue, but we are, so Travis has a little, uh, presentation to cover. But it's a job we have to do and he's got some thoughts on how we did that.
Thank you, Mark.
I can talk fast and I can save us some time. All of the details are in this presentation about the policies and the contract and the laws that govern evaluation of superintendent. And I've talked with, uh, Rose and Greg McKenzie, who has traditionally supported the board in evaluating superintendent Scott, um, before me. And so here, can you just, are you, are you doing that?
Do you want to?
That's okay. Can I do this and then you go?
Yep.
It's gonna be fast.
All right.
So I'm just gonna run through this quickly and the next time we meet, you all can vote to adopt the criteria for the evaluation. So I would propose that we align with COSA and OSBA's manual for the evaluation of superintendent. And I'll tell you a few details about why and then I'll happily answer your questions about this process. So what is the purpose of conducting an evaluation is required by district policy is required by, uh, my contract. And also I believe it supports the implementation of it, helps our strategic plan and also my job performance. So. One more, there are five kind of anchor points that you can study if you want to know how and why to evaluate superintendent. And this is a list, I'm gonna go through them one at a time. First is the superintendent's contract that says the criteria will be developed by the board in cooperation with the superintendent and adopted by the board in meeting open to the public. That would happen next time. And one of the slides in this deck shows you the proposed, um, indicators, the evaluation criteria and then a couple of goals that I'd like to send myself. Next is the board policy on superintendent evaluation, talks about standards for performance and have developed in the public board meeting. Again, the standards I want to propose come from the OSBA and COSA handbook alone. There's a link to that handbook if you'd like to study it in its entirety, is true on different national standards for superintendency. And there are eight standards. I like to propose a ninth also for the Hillsborough School District, but you can see that the standards one through eight are visionary district leadership, ethics and professional norms, inclusive district culture, culturally responsive instructional leadership improvement, communication and community relations, effective organizational management, effective financial management, policy governance. And a few years ago, the school board adopted the ninth standard, which would be, uh, leadership or educational equity. I'd like to propose that we continue to do that.
Is that in COSA?
That one's not, it's threaded in COSA, but we called it out as a school board. We, the school board prior to this one, called it out as some kind of a separate and like standard.
And what's the years doesn't have?
They don't have it that you can see. Can you go back one please, Karen? You can see like culturally responsive instructional leadership improvement. That's definitely anchored in that.
Nancy, when you have those questions, you see a lot of them so they can hear them.
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, the question was, does COSA and OSBA's manual not have an educational equity, um, standard? And the answer is no, they don't have it as such, but we do. Uh, so far.
Being a part of that board that made that change. Yes, it, uh, it was sort of each or means in the eight that you talk about. And then the, the previous board of this one, uh, had a discussion about figuring out, maybe we should call it out individually and decided to sort of take the pieces, parts that were in you need and make it, that's the change we made.
Thank you. Uh, keep going, please, Karen. Thank you. In the job description for superintendent, um, it's my goal to provide effective administration and therefore that has to be evaluated. You go. Um, performance standards and any goals for the year. So not only the standards for performance, but, um, in the policy CBG, it, uh, encourages that we goal set. And my goals, I'd like to be in line with the same with the board's goals as well that you've set for yourselves. Keep going. Here's a proposed process for your adoption that here in October, the superintendent would draft what those standards and goals would be in the board would adopt those. That would happen actually in November. And then in November, we would fine tune the process. We worked with Greg McKenzie to, uh, sign a contract with him to support the board and determine what level of input is needed by the board to perform the evaluation of my responsibilities. When this comes around the first time, I won't have been in a position for an entire year. So it might be a light version, year one, or maybe something more comprehensive in the future. Um, then there'd be a mid-year goal reflection from me in January, self-evaluation presented to you all in April, prior to you rating my performance on those different criteria or goals. And then those would be compiled and, um, put in my file at the end of the year. Uh, keep going. The board would speak with one voice. There's no, um, uh, the, the board wouldn't individually critique me and write a letter. Each of the one single board evaluation done by the board chair. It would happen in executive session. And this is the, what the scorecard would look like with a ninth standard out for leadership for educational equity. And my goals that I propose for the board would be to accomplish my transition plan that you're all privy to, uh, based on my interview process. And then to implement data systems for the year one of our strategic plan, which you'll learn more about soon. And next steps for us would be to adopt the OSBA and COSA standards one through eight and the HSD equity standard number nine. And then to adopt my goals of accomplishing the transition plan, um, and implementing the data system for year one. And that's it. That would be what I would ask you to vote to affirm, that that's what you'd like to evaluate me on next time we meet in an open session open to the public, so that it's clear what the standards are for my evaluation. And then we use that calendar marking that and I will work with Rose and Greg McKenzie to, uh, take action on that calendar as proposed. I'm open to any questions. I just wanted to get the board up on the right foot on how to evaluate me and come in line with those standards as adopted by OSBA and COSA and keep it.
I just have a little context that we did not do this last year because it was the final year versus the beginning. It didn't will be like a thing. It's, uh, quite a bit of work for board members to do, valuable and important work, but it is quite a bit of work. We didn't need to do it last year. So the last time this was done was a couple of years ago. Uh, to the point of the board speaking with one voice as not as individual, I crafted the letter. I need to do that one? Me? Oh. Generally, that's not the case. Sorry, generally people like keep it down. Okay, um, I, I would say that, and for a while I crafted the letter, uh, in addition to the numerical readings, every board member was able to include, uh, some narrative regarding this categories. And I, I hope I did, I feel like I did a good job of integrating the feedback of everyone into that letter. Um, if, if you were on the board last time we did this, you don't feel like your feedback was integrated appropriately, please let me know. Uh, and I will try to be better next time. But, uh, when we, when Travis and I first talked about putting this on the agenda for today, what we, what we talked about was, uh, generally, this board likes to think about something and then at the next meeting, so that's what we're doing now. We're thinking about it and then hopefully next meeting we'll be able to adopt this stuff. So to Travis's point, before I interject it, are there any questions? Sheen.
Thank you. So without comparing the previous standards that we use with, um, Mike, how does this differ, if at all, with, uh, the kind of the previous process that we've been used to for the last several years?
Yeah, Sheen, good question. I, I put them side by side and I can provide that. Rose and I could show you the Greg McKenzie's old template and then the proposed new template and you could compare and contrast. It's not very different. If anything, this one's more streamlined, but I could say that the, the work that Greg and Mike did years ago was already in line with, I think, COSA or OSBA's recommendations because Greg McKenzie worked for the OSBA. And so those morphed into this new addition, which combines COSA's best thinking and OSBA's best thinking. And so when Greg looked at it, he said, this looks great. I can see a lot of my work here. So, um, I don't think it's a big swing away from what you're used to.
I think the adding of the two goals at the bottom is kind of newish, right?
Right.
Yeah, that's about the only, that's the only deviation I really noticed myself.
That sounds good. Thank you. No need to, I don't need to get pite by pite. I was just curious, uh, if, if high level and what those differences were, but thank you.
Thank you. Other questions?
I, I, I like the idea of having, uh, the goals in it. Um, and I appreciate the fact that you realize that now's not the time to have five goals. So thank you. Having two goals is a good idea because you might be able to accomplish those. Smart thing.
And, uh, I, oh, sorry, nevermind. Uh, I, I would say I'm interested. Again, it would be by the time we're conducting this evaluation, we'll have not even certain positions for a year. So I like the idea of a light version. I would love to get the, uh, opinion of an expert about what a light version would be. Like, how is it, how is that different from what we would be in a full? What is, I like the idea of light version. I also don't know what it means.
Sorry for hearing that.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? All right.
Thanks, everybody.
That concludes our work session. We'll have on our phone. Uh, you did say something again, right? All right, uh.
All the regular session of Hillsborough School District, one J to order. We'll begin as we always do with the flag salute. For those of you in the room, it's at the back door over there. As we gather here today, we would like to take a moment to acknowledge that our district service area is on the occupied traditional homelands of the Atfaldy Indigenous people, lands we now call Washington County and the state of Oregon. We honor the indigenous people whose traditional and ancestral homelands we stand on. The Tualton, Kalapuyia, Kavlamit, Clackamas, Tomwater, Malala, Bands of the Chinook and other indigenous nations of the Columbia River. And remembering these community, communities, we honor their legacy, their lives and their ancestors. We also recognize the urban indigenous native first peoples' communities living in the metro area, which include over four hundred tribal nations. The Hillsborough School District is committed to the recognition and education regarding tribal and local history and working with our local tribes in partnership. We have a few proclamations today.
Jeremy, good evening, everyone. The Hillsborough School District knows that during National Native American Heritage Month, we celebrate the rich, the rich tapestry of indigenous people and honor their sacrifices, which we recognize as intricately woven into the history of this community and country. The Hillsborough School District recognizes that Native Americans are descendants of the original indigenous inhabitants of what is now the United States. The Hillsborough School District honors Native Americans who have enriched our heritage and continue to add to all aspects of our society through their generosity of culture and the continued practice of teaching economic, environmental and cultural sustainability. The Hillsborough School District is committed to engaging in dialogues led by tribal communities around the opportunities and work in which they are currently engaged in the areas of self-determination, sovereignty and cultural preservation. The Hills, the Board of Directors of the Hillsborough School District do hereby proclaim the month of November, twenty twenty three, be Native American Heritage Month. We urge all community members to join us in recognizing Native American Heritage Month.
I believe our next one is Sheen from online.
Thank you. The Hillsborough School District recognizes that public schools are the backbone of our society, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's values of freedom, stability and equality. The Hillsborough School District knows that by empowering young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for and access to a productive future. The Hillsborough School District recognizes that education employees, licensed, classified and technical support staff and administrators work tirelessly to serve our children in communities with care and professionalism. The Hillsborough School District encourages all community members to extend their commitment to public education and to the future of our children by supporting our community schools through the contribution of time and energy. The Board of Directors of the Hillsborough School District do hereby proclaim the week of November thirteenth through seventeenth, twenty twenty three, the American Education Week. We urge all community members to join us in recognizing American Education Week.
Thank you. I believe our next one is also online, Monique.
Yes, good evening, everyone. The Hillsborough School District recognizes that education support professionals are essential partners to the education process and work diligently to provide a safe and healthy learning environment. And work diligently to provide a safe and healthy learning environment for students. The Hillsborough School District appreciates that education support professionals labor tirelessly to serve our students with care and professionalism. The Hillsborough School District honors the invaluable and often unsung behind the scenes work in the support of teachers in delivering instruction, developing their talents, and dedication in our service to our students. The Board of Directors of the Hillsborough School District do hereby proclaim that November 15th, 2023 be National Education Support Professionals Day. We urge all community members to join us in recognizing all education support professionals for their valued contributions to the Hillsborough School District.
Thank you. Would anybody like to move to approve the agenda?
I moved that the Board of Directors approved the agenda as presented.
A second. It's been moved by Director Thomas and seconded by Director McGuire that the Board of Directors approve the agenda as printed. Is there any discussion? Is there any objection? Motion carries. Would anybody like to move regarding the consent agenda?
I moved that the Board of Directors approved the consent agenda as printed.
A second. It's been moved by Director Lopez and seconded by Director McGuire that the Board of Director approved the consent agenda as printed. Is there any discussion? Is there any objection? Motion carries. I do not believe we have anyone signed up for audience time tonight. Is that correct? All right. So no need to read that. Reports and discussions. One of our most exciting jobs as board members is to get to hear about the new offerings being provided, courses. For our students and today we have that opportunity. So. Brooke, are you leaving us on? Are you just kicking us off? All right.
Good evening. This is the first reading of metal processing three and it's Mark shared. An exciting time to start. Sharing recommendations for not only courses, but then curriculums will come as well. So. Tonight, we have our first one coordinator Melissa Pendergrass of Career and College Pathways will be sharing some information that we received at our first. Community curriculum advisory committee and then we'll share some of their feedback and recommendations and then take any questions.
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. There we go. Nope, too far. Great. As most of you know, I'll just give a little recap for context since it's a new group for the with our first proposal this year. Our career college pathway programs in HSD span over more than 60 programs across all of our high schools and that is. Referencing a course sequence of two and a half or more credits that students take in a focused area. This is linked on the slide deck, but so it's a little hard to see here, but this represents the six different career learning areas that each of our CCPs fall into. And our metal processing course that we're proposing tonight is part of the industrial arts and engineering CLA. And then that career cluster within that is manufacturing. Advanced manufacturing is a large industry sector in our area, as you know, so we're always looking to be responsive to what the needs are of our community. And what we can do to prepare students for high wage, high demand jobs. And this is certainly an area that we look to be responsive to. Our current programming in this area at Glencoe High School, it consists of two courses. So that falls under what we're calling currently the manufacturing and design technology CCP. And that is a career and technical education program that is state approved that has currently two credits. By the fall of 2024, all current technical education programs must have three unique credits. So this is part of the need to propose a new course is to get to that three credits and. In addition to that, the program has shifted a little over time to be more responsive of the need in our community with our industry partners. It has traditionally been very specific to welding, but there's now more going on in this program in terms of forging and vending and lots of other things that our teacher could tell you the specifics of. But is at homesick with also sick kids. So if we have questions about the details of that, we can get that from him in the next 30 days. But what the key is that there's a lot going on. So we're proposing a few things. If this course goes through with your approval in the next 30 days for metal processing three, we would also like to rename those two. Current courses from machine welding to metal processing to better represent all of the work that students are doing in that for in those courses and the skills that they're learning. So we would look at just having a three course sequence of metal processing, one, two, and three. Metal Processing Three would be the capstone course. Currently, what we experience is that students who want more than two credits are repeating machine welding two. So there are a lot of students that are earning three credits in that program. It's just that two credits are machine welding two, so they're repeating that course. So we don't want that. We want the transcript to represent that they're taking three unique courses. And it's also a new teacher in the last year that has a lot of great ideas of how to move the program forward. So this is giving him an opportunity to really have a distinct capstone course where students are putting to work the skills they're learning in this first two in those first two courses. They're really confident that I just said things on future slides. Covered that. Yep, sorry. The core sequence for that capstone course looks very project based. So right now, how that looks, students are taking that that repeat the course are. In the seniors are in with the juniors at the same time doing more independent work. And that model would stand and it's very typical of our career and technical education programs is that we have teachers teaching multiple levels together. And those advanced students are working more independently, putting those skills to practice. This gives him the opportunity he's put together. How he would like to take those skills and then how does that look in the business of that industry? And how are you supporting your clients and moving through the process of advanced manufacturing? From developing prototypes and testing those in the market, quality assurance, how are you. Considering sales and manufacturing marketing within your industry needs. In CTE programs, there's a few content standards that we link to. One thing that we always do is partner with Portland Community College to articulate as closely as we can with the with the programs that tie to our CTE programs. And so you'll see linked into the slide deck is the welding course content outcome guide for PCC. So our teachers collaborate twice a year with PCC faculty in their area to identify how they can ensure the skills and the. Curriculum they're using in the classroom aligns with what's happening at PCC so that if students do transfer to PCC, they either maybe already have dual credit. That they've earned or they have they feel really confident in the material because they've seen it already in high school and had a had a window into that already. The curriculum that the teacher is proposing is also the same curriculum and textbook that is used at PCC. The other thing that you'll see is our CTE Oregon skill sets and that is a set of skills that is identified at the state level with industry input. And is for each of those career learning areas. So there's a set of skills specifically for the manufacturing cluster under the industrial arts and engineering umbrella. And so he also considers those and tries to incorporate as many of those as possible into the three credits that's offered. And then the last is Oregon employability skills. This is a new framework. It's not new, but it's kind of rebranded in the last few years in the state of Oregon. There's work around with partners and educators on how to identify what are those key skills that all employees need. And so that's something that we're also partnering with the state of Oregon for with ODE on is how are we embedding those 10 skills into all of our CTE courses as well? So that's another piece in the development of the curriculum that he's looking at. In terms of impact, we always like to consider if we're adding a new course, proposing a new course, what's the impact on the building schedule? Are there other? Does this take away from? Does this add to? And in this case, it's we consider it a win win because the student's already taking a course with that teacher. We just want to honor mostly that that on their transcript. So it shows that they have that unique credit that is not duplicative of that other curse that they've already have on their transcript. It doesn't. There's no need for additional FTE. So there's not a cost associated with that, which is great. And it doesn't impede on any other offerings that are happening in the building.
Did I not hear you say that there was a new teacher?
He this is his. He's in year two and a half and it was not he replaced a former teacher. Yeah, it's not in the program. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. He's just new. So it was really exciting for him to think through like, what do I want out of these courses? Because he adopted a program, right? He came into it. So it's just been a good process for him to be able to go through that journey of what do I want out of courses? What do I want for students? Thank you. Costs are something that we always consider, especially with current technical education programs because they can be quite expensive. The consumable materials, the transportation fees for field trips, things like that, when we're talking about work based learning. Guess job shadows where we want to get students out and into the community. There are costs associated with that. In this case, kind of not too big of a deal because we are already offering a lot of this just under that umbrella of the current course. So it would just kind of shift the cost to that new course. And then also thinking about there's upgraded funding streams for CTE programs. It doesn't just hit the general fund budget. We have access to high school success funds for CTE. Perkins, it is a Perkins program study, so it's eligible for Perkins funding every year. And then also he's as he builds his program, he'll have access to secondary career pathway grant funding as well that comes from the state. When CTE teachers are working on developing, of course, proposals, one thing they consider too are that those equitable outcomes for students. A lot of that work is happening with our CTE teachers right now when we have advisory board meetings, professional development time, that alignment time with TCC instructors. One thing that they're always looking at is how can they recruit, retain non traditional students in in CTE and non traditional for Perkins. Definition refers to non traditional by gender. So for welding and metal processing, that is female students. And then also with our goals, how are we looking at what is the recruitment and retention for our Latino, Latino, Latinx students? And there's work done around that in a number of ways. And so that is just something that we like to keep at the forefront too. Community partners and industry partners for advanced manufacturing is well established for our district, which is great. We do a lot of work with the Hillsborough Advanced Manufacturing Work Group. So this is a program that really benefits from that work and that collaboration. So there are a number of partners that connect with this teacher to support in terms of internships, job shadows, coming into the classroom for guest speaking. And that's just a few to point out on the screen there. And then we'll let Brooke talk a little bit about the feedback that we got from the CCAC.
When this was proposed by Jonathan Stufel, the instructor and supported by Melissa Pendergrass. Three questions that came up were projected growth in the welding industry. So you'll see that that is a 15.5%. Growth in Oregon over the next 10 years. The second question was the current demographics of student enrollment that Melissa just spoke a little bit about, but specifically represented in gender. There's a steady increase of female and non binary enrollment. So you'll see over the last three years that increase in growth. And then also in race ethnicity, excuse me, the 33% enrollment of students who identify as Hispanic, Latinx, Latino, and Latina. And then in work based learning opportunities, Melissa again spoke a little bit to this, but just the specific focus in in a workplace simulation occurring at Glencoe High School. And then as well as the development of internships and pre apprentice also within that program as well. So the CCA recommendation was a 16 in favor, zero that were not. We did have four members that were absent that night. To move metal processing three forward to the school board for recommendation. So now we will take any questions that you may have.
Does anybody have any questions for the team? Erica?
Maybe not just for this presentation, but maybe in the future too, just wanting to know a little bit more about the PD around equity for these kinds of classes. Specifically like wondering, how do we make those spaces welcoming for non traditional students when sometimes they might be only one or a couple of the whole group? And that can be a little intimidating. So just wondering, you have that info now or later present?
Sure, I could speak to that a little bit. I would say the last few years, the work that we've done. Has primarily focused on the outreach and the recruitment of those non traditional and underserved students. So we've done a lot in terms of what does our forecasting process look like? Who are we putting in front of students when we're talking about? That pathways that that are available to them. We have CCP, we refer to them as CCP ambassadors for each program at each high school. And so that's one or two students that have been identified to when there's a career fair or when there's a forecasting presentation at a middle school or for ninth graders. Those students have volunteered to be an ambassador for that program and we try to be really intentional about making sure that those students are representative of our community and also non traditional for whatever that program is. By gender. And so we've done work there and I think that's great. The next piece is really how what does the PD look like that we're offering for teachers? There's academic seminar is definitely happening that has an equity focus at each of our buildings. Our CTE teachers are able to participate in that, which is great. On teacher directed, all of our CTE teachers are working together and they have identified goals in their advisory board meetings that are all around how to make sure that they're how to look and at the data. What is the representation in their classroom? Where are the gaps trying to unpack what the reasoning is where for those gaps and collaborating together on strategies? There's a few pieces that we're working on for the future in the spring and there that's equity driven PD from outside consultancy, consultancy agencies that we're looking at. How do we be really intentional about who we're putting in front of our teachers for equity PD and. Ensuring that it's focused on current tech blood and increasing that access. So that kind of answers your question, but any men?
Close to the mic, Brooke.
To have the data that we would be looking at. And now Melissa, working with her team has developed those specific. Program identical data dashboards that they can also use in some of that professional development work that I think really makes it more meaningful of how do I create those strategies to include. Welcoming practices within my programs and and what is that data telling me in, and I think a very meaningful way.
Monique, looks like you have something to add. Oh, sorry.
I just a follow up to that. And I think what I was speaking to more was also not just for the teachers, but like the space itself. When there's traditionally has been like, let's say, only male students and now having female students participate in this and. Maybe it's also for students themselves to have practices of like being more welcoming spaces. That's what I was kind of.
Monique?
Yes, just a curiosity. How is the change of names communicated to students? Because sometimes, you know, students will see, oh, I'm thinking of taking welding next term or next year. And then that title disappears. So how is that communicated to students? So they understand that it's it hasn't disappeared. It's just changed its name.
Each year in our forecasting process, that's we start in November, December, working with our buildings on what are all the changes that will happen inside of our course catalog before the forecasting process happens with students in March. And part of that is developing guidance lessons that counselors provide to all of our students through advisory or different core content classes. And any of those changes that have occurred for CCPs to move them in the right direction to respond, we make sure to have slides that say like, hey, this happened with aerospace last year. We had a very detailed slide that said, this is what you were taking. We've done a few name changes to clean things up as the program has developed. Make sure this is what you're forecasting for for next year. So it is kind of program by program, but we make sure to include those resources that go out to students and to families.
Okay, thank you so much.
Other questions?
I'm pretty. So I've mentioned it probably in this room before, but my dad was born on a farm in Alabama. Didn't finish high school and managed to make a life for his family as a iron worker in Chicago. So my whole entire life, my dad has had the had the ability to process metal. And, you know, watching heat it and bend it and cut it with a torch and steel, iron, bronze, whatever was all amazing, but to. Nine year old kid or 14 year old, watching welding in the distance if he was up multiple stories or close with a hood on, it always felt like magic to me. Like it was like watching my dad do magic. So.
Thank you so much. And we will be back next month. So we appreciate your time and your question.
Next up is the financial report. You have it in your packet. Michelle, do you have anything to add this week?
I would like to note, thank you Chair Watson, that we have a couple donations.
I would like to note, thank you Chair Watson, that we have a couple donations over $5,000. They were also part of the consent agenda. But a donation of $10,000 from Renaissance Charitable Foundation on behalf of John and Carol Strauss to Lennox Elementary School for General Education, and then another donation of $7,200 from the Patterson Booster Club to be used for field trips and library books and supplies. Just a shout out and thank you to the community for supporting our schools. And happy to answer any questions you have about the financial report.
That's where I was going. We're on the same page. Any questions from Michelle? Yeah, Patrick?
Yeah, I also noted that the donations and how much we appreciate that community support. I was a little curious, we could follow up by email, but any quick answer you have now. When we do have a larger donation that's made in cash unrestricted, like this one for Lennox Elementary School seemed to be. How does that process in terms of how are decisions made about how to use that?
Usually it's pretty targeted, the principals involved. Usually there's a teacher point of contact as well. So all donations and grants kind of funnel through the building principal. And they determine if it's targeted for technology or for facilities improvement. They reach out to those departments to make sure that it can be supported and sustained over time. So there is like a checklist and process. And for just a general donation that's unrestricted, all of that would go through the principals' associated student body account where it's basically anything they deem as a school that's good for the student body at large.
Okay, and that doesn't require a budgeting and that even though it's not in the past budget because it was handled that way?
Yeah.
I guess building off that, for my time being active in the PTO with Tobias Elementary. If it's, it doesn't have restriction or whatever, I think that was oftentimes used for a person. So if it's to hire halftime art or something like that is usually called out? Or is that sometimes those non-specific ones are used to hire halftime art teacher or something like that?
Again, it's usually at the discretion of the principal. And if it comes in to be used, usually when it's FTE, we're pretty careful about how that comes in and making sure that we can actually afford that position, given the size of the donation.
I meant like project, yeah, okay.
Yeah, there's lots of discussion around that, but yeah, certainly can be used towards FTE.
Anything else? All right. Our next agenda item is Connor with the October 2023 enrollment report.
Right, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much. I just wanted to kind of point out a couple of things on this report. One of the things that you'll see at the top is that we do have a decrease of our student enrollment overall. And when you look at the table in the right-hand bottom corner, we are down 1.22% overall for our student enrollment. I do want to say this is on trend to what this has happening at the state level. At the state level, they are down 1.32%. So we are on par with them in regards to our student enrollment. As you go through each of the kind of bullets that are listed below, I just wanted to kind of point out a couple of things in comparison to last year. So we do see that we have less students that are transferring out of the district in comparison to last year. Last year, we had about 120 more students that were choosing to transfer out of the district to be participating in the virtual charter or choosing to do, to be homeschooled. And so those, those numbers are different in comparison to last October's enrollment report. One thing to consider too is as we have high school students at the senior level, 12th grade that are graduating. We have larger class sizes at that point that are graduating out and smaller kindergarten classes that are being enrolled or students that are being enrolled class size. So there is kind of the part of where we're seeing some of our discrepancies in our overall numbers. Another point that I wanted to point out towards the bottom is we have 60 students transferring into the Hillsborough School District, which is pretty much on par to what we had last year. So that numbers remains the same. And those are pretty common trends for that number. Our Hillsborough Online Academy has increased between 168 students between 2019 and 2023. Last year, I kind of looked at the data and we were about 196 students compared to this year. And you can see, if you look at trends, we had, you know, a very large number of our students that were choosing to enroll during the pandemic time. But we're seeing a trend of our students that are returning to their neighborhood schools and were transferring out of Hillsborough Online to their neighborhood schools. If you go onto the second page, one of the things I also wanted to point out was the historical data that you see for the last 10 years. And we do see a decrease in the number of students that are, have been enrolled in comparison from 2014 to 2023. Just over 2,000 students. And I think it goes back to that kind of overall trend that we're seeing statewide and what we're seeing here in Hillsborough, also across the nation. I think we're seeing birth rate decreases overall. And then if you look at our allocating staff ratios between 2015 and 2023, you can see what our numbers are for kindergarten. First through third, fourth through sixth, and then seven through 12. One of the key pieces that I want to point out that once we came into the pandemic and we were coming out of it, we made a real point to target funds to make sure that we were supporting students. So we used our SIA funds to ensure that. And we also right-sized staffed about about 40 FTE this last year to make sure that we were having appropriate class ratios and having that in place. On the last page, you will see data about our student enrollment overall through the years. And you can see that we have more students who identify as part of the global majority. And those have increased, especially for Asian, African-American. And you'll see the word Hispanic on here, and that's not the word that we typically use, but that's part of that state identification. Federal identification that we have to use for this particular report than those who also identify as multiple race. So that's kind of an overview of the enrollment report. Are there any questions that you may have?
Any questions? Oh, Monique has a question.
Yes, Monique?
Hi, good evening again. Just real quick on the 60 students who transfer in, is it every year it's unique students transferring in? Or are these kids that reapply? I don't recall how that process works.
Can I ask, have Beth answer that one? Yeah, typically for students who are coming in on inter-district transfers, we almost always allow them to stay through graduation. Of course, they always have the option to go back to their home district if they so choose. And there are a couple of ways that they could lose the privilege of being on a transfer, but for the most part, we allow them to stay through 12th grade.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
So I do have a follow-up question. Then if it makes sense, what you just said about if they come in one year, they'll stay in the program unless and until something catastrophic happens. However, if what, how am I saying this? The increase that we experienced, is that going to, I don't know if, I think what we're trying to get to is the increased real. So in other words, you've got, we've got people that are coming into the district or transferring in to online academy and then they're staying. And then they have a right to then transfer back to their homeschooling anytime. Is that correct?
Well, it would not be correct to say that all 60 are going into Hillsborough Online. They're all at all different schools across the district.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so we had 60 transferring and 62 transfer out. So it's a net essentially, yeah.
And the other thing that might be interesting to note is that with our students who are on transfer, if they are ever at a school that is experiencing a significant hardship with their enrollment within their attendance area, we do have the capability to have them go to a different school within our district. Because we've said that they have the right to stay through graduation. They do not necessarily have the right to stay at the exact school in which they are initially placed. We try not to do that for obvious reasons, but.
So I apologize if I thought, I think the conversation about.
Hillsborough Online, you thought it was all Hillsborough.
I'm guessing we have more granularity, granularity available and just this is more a curiosity, like the biggest negative numbers at middle school and seventh graders would have been spring break in the fifth grade when they went home, is that right? Or spring break in the fourth grade, where would they have been? Seventh grade would have been in fourth grade when they went home at spring break for COVID. Eighth grader would have been in the fifth grade when they went home from COVID.
Yes.
Right. So I'm, I'm wondering if we see that. Yeah, just curious how that changes over time. Yeah.
My only other comment is I'm wondering, are we aware of any legislative efforts to try to deal with any inequity that might happen across the state and even us when it comes to declining population? That is actually reducing our numbers. Because what I, what I feel is that we will continually be exporting our tax dollars, but we then will continually be, unless the legislature does something, then they're going to want to cut that funding as well if everybody's numbers. And I'm just wondering, do we know legislatively, are we talking about that?
It's, it has not been on the radar of the Legislative Policy Committee or OSBA yet. Maybe that's just because we haven't brought it up, but the enrollment issue is on the radar. Bills won't drop until, they kind of get a little bit preview, but we don't have a sense of what bills are going to be coming up in the short session yet. Probably end of December-ish. And they would have insight into some legislators asking questions and they didn't bring up like anybody thinking about putting that forward yet. Hopefully we'll have OSBA Legislative Summit in January and be able to ask our legislators directly. That'd be cool. Should do it again. 10 years of that or whatever. So. Anything else?
All right. I had a, I had a question. Sorry.
Go ahead.
For all of the, it's kind of a general question for online academic students. For all the ones that are enrolled that are counted as seniors currently, do they have the option to walk with their class on graduation?
I'm pretty sure yes.
I think the answer is yes.
Hillsborough Online is actually its own school, so they have their own specific graduation. They're actually, they're our own code in ODE, so they have their own graduation.
It's Oak Street that can walk with their.
Oak Street Campus is that option, that pathway for our students that is still tied to their home high school. So therefore students that Oak Street Campus that are enrolled there or in early college, they get to walk with their home high school because they're still connected in that way. But online is its own unique identity in school. Great question.
If they were to be transferred, let's say from Glencoe High School to Hillsborough Online Academy, would they have the option to choose that they want to walk with their class of Glencoe or no?
We have not historically done that if they are fully enrolled in Hillsborough Online. If they are a concurrently enrolled student, we do figure out what, what school they would like to walk with. We tend to have them select one.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thanks so much.
I see Beth over your shoulder because she has the next item. I know, or she's going to race to the other mic. Well, all right.
Well, we've, I feel like we've done a lot of great work. So we're super excited, Brooke and I, to share our first board update on our brand new strategic plan that has been in place since July 1st. And this is going to be the first of two annual reports that you will be receiving mid-year. We've kind of committed to doing updates in October and February with then a full recap on all of our goals that we can go over in more depth at your August retreat. So we've got the driver. Just a couple of establishing slides here to remind us where we're going and what our objectives are. I hope you've all had a chance to maybe notice our very cool new promise statement in very large format behind you. That was present at our all-staff kickoff on big tables with a lot of pens. And I went back to look at it once everything was over before I had walked up to it and I thought, well, darn it. You know, I wish we had said more about it so people knew to sign it. And when I looked and saw all the signatures, it was so exciting. I knew we had to display it prominently. So super exciting. But so here is our portrait of a graduate that has our, our four main goal areas for graduates from our system. Go ahead. And then again, our promise statement there to know value and empower every student. Our five main goal areas, these are our structural elements of how we organize our goals to kind of frame that path through our system, early years, safe and supportive learners, obviously for everyone, pre-K through 12 plus. Access and opportunity also for all grade levels and critical thinking and problem solving. But then of course, once we get students to the high school level, really concentrating on graduation and completion of their high school years. All right. So we have some new graphics to share with you over the next couple of slides, hence the excitement for my portion of this presentation. And many thanks to Alano Chiliberto. He's a wizard with graphics. So very excited to have him on the team. But so wanted to be able to share with you how we've organized our accountability structures for our strategic plan. And we consider them kind of bucketed in three areas, kind of three areas of the work. The first being community, how are we going to be accountable to our community and ensure that we are not only continuing to share information with the community, but also continuing to receive input and communication from the community on how we're doing, their ideas, as we continue to move through our strategic plan, period. Of course, students are a key element of that. Then we have the work that's taking place in our schools and we've been very deliberate and I, and by we, I mean my colleagues that oversee schools, great job. Really tying a tight line between our new strategic plan and school-based improvement plans. That, that is just such a tight alignment that I know Brooke's going to talk a little bit more about. And how they are monitoring what's happening in their schools every day and the types of things that they're monitoring and the students that they're paying special attention to, to make sure that those students are getting what they need and achieving. That work is taking place in our schools every day. And then of course, we have the work happening here at our central office. And here is where we're really trying to kind of collect all of that data and what's happening in our schools and look at it kind of from a more holistic point of view and making sure that we have that broad alignment across our schools. And then of course, keeping data updated so that our principals can always be looking at as fresh of data as we have access to. How do we analyze that data, collect it, and then put it together in ways that are easy for people to understand? And go from there. Okay, this is a bit of a busy slide, but I feel like it gives you some great information and further breaks down when we're talking about that community column that we showed on the previous slide, what is happening within that timeframe? And how are we ensuring that we're actually doing what we say we're going to do? So there's a bit of a key up top that shows you times when we might be running surveys for people, holding focus group meetings. We have the little pie charts that show kind of the goal area that we might be targeting. And then some specific focus group actions. We're also planning to create a little strategic plan video that's student-focused so that we can go back out to students and say, you think we always ask you to do surveys and then we are not listening to you and we don't do anything with that data. But really it was the entire basis for our strategic plan. And every single thing that we have created a goal about is all about the students. And so we want to be able to come back to students and say, your voice really does matter. And here, here's how. So we're excited to put that together. And you can see that there are goals moving through the months of this school year. Some of the main things are happening as a result of, and thanks to Francesca and her group of family engagement liaisons. And that entire team is going to be so helpful and critical in going out to our. And that entire team is gonna be so helpful and critical in going out to our um, our pack groups. Our affinity-based parent advisory committees and ensuring that they have the opportunity to prepare for these conversations. And then really deeply engage the following month on an area that's both. A specific goal that's outlined in our strategic plan as well as something that's related to the work of our strategic plan. But specifically something that they have asked to learn more about. So trying to be really responsive to both our needs and our parent groups' needs in that effort, we think that's gonna be great. And then of course, all through the year, as we mentioned, the district office is, is collaborating and analyzing data. But then in those summer months is when we'll be um, collecting all of the data pertinent to this calendar year's collection. And putting that together in a manner that can be shared with you first and then with our broader community in the summer. And can also drive our professional development with staff. Okay, so this is your first look at our attempts to create a kind of an at-a-glance dashboard. And this hits on some just really nice at-a-glance versions, very visual, very infographic heavy. To look at, how are we doing versus our performance targets that we've set for ourselves? Which are reading in the third grade, they are student attendance ninety percent or better, they are on track to graduate. They are students who feel as though they belong, they're students who are um. Graduating in four years or completing in five years. So these um, visual elements are something that we think are gonna be really helpful. For our broader community to be able to access on our website, especially in the interim. Before we have those annual updates that contain all of our goal information and our data. So um, excited to share those with you. And now when I turn it over to Brooke, she's going to go a little bit more in-depth to share some of the action steps that are taking place within each of these goal areas. To ensure that movement is being made along the path to reaching our goals.
So along the lines, I think of the, you know, the importance of um, not only that communication piece, which includes our. Our reports to the board, um, but really that accountability part. So, we're excited to have benchmarks, but we also hold ourselves to our goals over the next. Four years of our strategic plan and then to continue to get better. So with that true focus of reaching our goals, we also have to hold ourselves to. Um, not only looking at that data, but how are we going to continually improve? And not only receive the feedback from our families and our students and staff over those years. And make adjustments to our action plans, but also um, support our, our TOSs, our teachers on special assignment. That also do a lot of this great work as well. So you'll see on each of these slides, we have a district lead, for example, this one is Gina McLean, our elementary teaching and learning director. Um, and then we also know our focal groups. At last time when we showed our data dashboards, you saw that we can easily drill down not only to our focal groups, but also by schools as well. And then um, noting those data sources. On this one, I want to note Audrey did a, a great presentation at a work session a couple of weeks ago where we talked about our state assessment data. But for us, we're looking at running records because we hold a value of our dual language. Um, programs within our, within our schools. And so we use running records because we're able to assess the proficiency, not only for our English. Um, take students who are taking the test, but also for our Spanish students, speaking Spanish, Spanish-speaking students as well. So I just want to take a note that we're using running records. So we have a benchmark of fifty-five percent for our third graders. Our hope is over the next four years that we have a seventy percent proficiency in those running records. You'll also see the action plan, so as we uh, go through the year, these might also be, be monitored and adjusted according to what our. What we're hearing in feedback, but currently the focus is for this year's action in the work is our Wonders and Maravillas. Scope and sequence, developing uh, rubrics, not only for our students to assess themselves, but also for our, our teachers as well. And then the professional development uh, for our educators. For attendees, um, also not only is our, our third grade reading, but also our attendance. Um, many of these are also connected to our integrated guidance, so attendance is also one that we're measuring for integrated guidance as well. And in this one, we're hoping in the next four years that we get to an eighty percent attendance. So once again, we have a district lead, Jenny Carey. And then um, in that, those family connections and the outreach to students and families as well. Um, and then also making sure that we have strong attendance teams that are monitoring their own data. But then Jenny coming in and supporting in that work as well. Now this one is, is connected to attendance in a lot of ways, because we feel like if our students are connected to their school in athletics and activities. That they're gonna be attending on a more regular basis. This one is not connected to integrated guidance, but we know it's a support for that attendance work. So um, this one currently we have a thirty-five percent participation rate. Um, once again, our district lead is Ryan Petrick. Um, in data that way, I, I noted that that's about seventy-one hundred students currently that are participating. In um, athletics and activities, a large focus in that K eight support. You'll see though, within those high school um, focus areas is around our affinity groups. And um, also at our middle schools as well. So we feel like if, if we really focus on that work and pay attention to that data, that also will help to connect. To that attendance piece and to the sense of belonging that Beth spoke about as well. In um, our on-track work, which has been such a, a focus of our district for some time, we do have some new investments in that area as well. Uh, connected to professional development. Here I want to note, the, the graphs are slightly different because H S D holds to a higher uh, standard for ninth grade on-track. We look at core credits earned, that's a three and a half core credit earned. In the O D E calculation, that's six credits in general. So that's those two uh, different kind of metrics that you see on each of those bars. But once again, that focus on the investment of, of professional development, not only as a district, but also targeted. Uh, building support this year as well and coaching that is occurring. Um, so that alignment and that support, we're hoping that that will continue. In this one, we're hoping that we have a um, a ninety-five percent. Rate of on-track by the time that we're done with the strategic plan. And then for our grad rate, uh, this one, and this one looks like it cut off just a slight bit at the end. But this one, um, we're hoping that to have a, about an eighty-nine percent graduation rate by the time that we're done. So once again, we have a point, a, a district lead. And just ensuring that we're continuing not only that ninth grade on-track work, but also the alignment of a lot of the school-wide base practices. That we know are great for engaging students um, to get them to the finish line in that four-year grad rate. And then finally, our, uh, our fifth year completers. The programming, the supports and the, and the work that we're doing at Oak Street Campus has been great. So continuing to, to refine those practices, to look how we can continue to improve diploma plus. Um, and then also just how do we continue to create great options for students to be attaining credit? Our, our goal and our hope is that we have a ninety-three percent on a fifth grade completion rate in the next. Four years after our strategic plan is, is done. So just those continued focus, especially those supports at Oak Street Campus and how to re-refine, but also connect students to those options to attain that credit. So in that, the next, some next steps that we also wanted to share was that uh, we have two more data summits, we just had one. And what that means is that all principals get together, they look at their own level data. And they are able to discuss practices that they feel are going well in their schools, hear from one another, um, exchange ideas. And then implement some of those practices, come back together and report out. So we'll have two more of those data summits. And then as Beth spoke, the community and student survey and focus groups will be, will be happening as well. Our O S P staff continuing to focus on those action plans. And then that ongoing of that data, uh, bringing that up in, in multiple venues, not only within our O S P team, at our data summits. But then also as Beth talked about, that school level as well. And I'll have her go over the last five bullet.
Thank you. Um, just a, a reminder, and we have it here, the next bullet down talks about our graduation information. For the class of twenty twenty-three. And then which will also, it'll be that four-year grad rate for class of twenty twenty-three. It'll be the fifth year completer data for what should have been the class of twenty-two. That comes out usually around the third week of January. And that is always our last data point of the previous school year. I guess perhaps not taking into account who actually matriculates to college, but it's roughly on that same schedule. But um, once we get that, then we will have all data for twenty-two, twenty-three. So it does, it's a little bit interesting, the points at which we get different aspects of our data throughout the year. But just so you know that that's, that's coming and once we have it, we'll be able to do a full look back at twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. And I think I shared the other important dates with you uh, when I started because I was so excited. So I'll just leave any remaining time for you to ask any questions. Oh, one more thing I will say before I do questions is that um, you all are seeing this tonight, yay. And the plan is for next Monday, in next Monday's hot news, to do um, a community-facing version of this. It won't be as detailed, not that it's not public information, but you know, something that they can actually kind of access in an easier fashion. And inviting them to take the community slash parent survey if they so choose. That's our plan is to annually offer that opportunity um, in the month of November. So it'll actually open on October thirtieth and run through November thirtieth. People will have the opportunity to take the survey. It's just one of the ways that they can provide feedback, as I mentioned, there's the opportunity to do more of a focus group type feedback. Um, with Francesca and her group or to send us feedback at any time, so.
I love when the graphics can help tell a story, because it's easier to um, disaggregate the, that data. Um, the one question that I had on, on a lot of them, where we have this um, twenty-three to twenty-seven strategic plan. So like our end goal date might be really high, but what is like for this year? So if I'm reading, you know, if I'm reading, for example, the um, access and opportunity, it says thirty-five percent. Uh, what is the goal for this year, I guess, or and what is the goal for the four years? So I can compare where we are now.
Well, I made notes of each of them, so on the dash, so I could answer that, that came up. So on the dashboards, it does drill down to.
Yeah, we should maybe talk about different terms, because this is a dash, this is like a public facing dashboard. The O S P team also developed a full set of internal, they're also calling them dashboards, so maybe we need a term change. But those are the ones that are drillable, right? This public facing one is more static, it's more of an infographic, could be printed on eleven by seventeen, for example. The dashboard she's talking about are the internal ones that are very, very detailed.
So like that one, the one that's up there.
Yeah.
Right.
That's what you're looking at. It's not gonna show you all that, it's, it's really just at a glance, but she can tell you what the goal is for the year.
Right, so like if we go back to at a glance, it said like um. That fifty. Fifty-five percent. So right up below where it says goal one, success in the early years, one, B dot one.
Yeah.
Percent, like I was trying to connect in my mind, I was like, okay, fifty-five percent, and what is the comparing it to that?
That's great. So on each of the, of the, I may call them the internal, internal dashboards. When they pop up, it says year to year, the, the growth rate for it. So this one, when you would click into that and pop up, it would say a three-point-two percent increase. So that's like the overall goal for the year, but it also drills down what our focal group.
Right.
Goal is as well, which I've noted on each one, so I either can re-share that or um, but just know that's how, that's how we measure it. Is it pops up on that dashboard, it reads that year of like, here's our goal for the overall year. Here's our focal group uh, percentage points that we're aiming for, and then how are we gonna get there is that action plan?
Okay, thank you.
You had something back?
Yeah, just real quick for Brooke or whoever, um, so uh, it, on goal one, success in the early years. I've looked up a number of these topics and it's really good to have that information, but I'm curious if you were explaining to someone who is not an educational professional, member of the community. And they said, what are the things, the most important things we're doing um, on this goal? That maybe we wouldn't be doing if this wasn't a goal or that not everyone is doing, or just the really special efforts we're taking, what would, what would be the top ones you'd wanna highlight?
Okay, well this, that's a really great question too. And so I actually am having each point person write two summary bullets for each of the goals to provide those talking points. So for this one, um, Gina has noted the focus on the professional development and then also those rubrics, for example. So but each one has two bullets, because we have in total fifteen goals that we're looking at. And so in that, I've created like a, a summary on each of those that just has high-level talking points if someone did ask that. So I'd be more than happy to provide that um, as well as a resource.
I love that, yeah, because this is the one that's especially important.
Because this is, this can be a lot, right? So that's why we're also creating kind of those summary statements as well for each goal.
Perfect, thank you.
So, so is it possible, I, I, because I think what's happening is we're used to seeing the high level. Right, and so now all of our questions are actually on the background, the other ten pages that go behind every one of those pages. So I was wondering, can, can you guys make that available to us, maybe drop that in our next packet and then we can have the details. Sworn to secrecy and no confidentiality, but access to it. Cause then that, then she would be able to, I mean, Erica would be able to answer her question. I had a few questions behind it, the data behind it.
I guess we might need to tease out a little bit more about what you're hoping to get. Because there's literally volumes and volumes and volumes of data and information. And I think not that, again, nothing's secret necessarily. But I think there's danger in a volume of data without a lot of explanation. And I think that's why we've set kind of um, points throughout the year to share different things with you. And also acknowledging that you're gonna get a full meal deal once this has been implemented for a year, like next summer. So I guess just, I, I want to make sure that we're not um, being irresponsible in. Vomiting out a bunch of stuff, that we're not going to be able to then, you know, in realistic amounts of time, pull together. Better analyses on everyone, which is what you deserve, which is why we have stated kind of the timeline that we have, I guess.
And when did you say our next update is?
Well, you'll get another like.
Like this one.
Periodic update, you're gonna get another one in February, which will be a little more heavily focused on your grad rates, for example.
Rose, maybe uh, before a board update before February, could we include like a heads up to board members to remember that we're about to get this presentation? If there's any sort of granularity that you might wanna see in the presentation, hit them with an email about it.
Yeah, totally will.
Maybe like just a little reminder to us, like, okay, your, your strategic plan update's coming up in the next board meeting. If there's some granular stuff that's uh, more specific than the high level. That you'd like to see called out, give us a little heads up. That be all right?
I think so, yeah. A lot more information, yeah, because that'll be a full.
That's it.
Data set on all the fifteen goals with the breakout groups and all of that.
So this entire thing is the analytical side and uh, pretty much all the study side. But when we're actually going through the execution process of this and you're in there in person. And for example, for the uh, kids on track to graduating, however they happen to fall off track, which is likely due to the reason of some mental problem. Anything, but we have people on standby, stand by, such as counselors, uh, grad coaches there to assist those students. And when we do, I've heard from students who have experienced counselors and grad coaches, speaking to them. It's more of a process of trying to fix up what's going on rather than what they really need is comfort. And how do you guys plan on changing the execution of what's going on in heads of students falling off track?
That's a really great question, so it's not that bad. Um, I think what you're talking about is there's on-track meetings and someone was talking about on-track. That was some of the work and the coaching around that. So that's when the counselor, grad coach and the grade level ministry gets together and looks at the data around. And students who are off track at a certain time and how they're gonna support them. I think you're also talking though about the personal social needs of students. And sometimes there, there's referrals from. And sometimes there, there's referrals from a grade level grad, the grade level team to care team. And care team is a great place where um, once again, the counselors are there, the administrator, but then also someone called a care coordinator, the students' program wellness counselors are there. And so that side of how do we best support the students in whatever that their need is currently, and that is impacting their academic, which is that grad, that grade level team analysis, then moves to the uh, care team support to talk about what does that student need? And what does that look like? So the, the on-track team is more of that um, grade analysis that what, how are we going to help them academically? And then moving to that core, that care team.
Thank you. Uh, I was also wondering uh, through the strategic plan, not saying this would happen, if what we're trying to execute or will be executing with the strategic plan were to happen to experience a fallout, or it backfires, do you guys have a fallback plan on, on kind of countering what's going on?
Do you mean altogether, or like a specific goal?
It could be any goal.
Okay, let's talk specific goal. So I think that's why the accountability piece and those, the communication parts that we put together this year are so important. It's that if you're looking at data on a regular basis at every level, so like for us at our, our Office for School Performance, we're looking at the data dashboards, and we're looking at our action plans on a regular basis. And that creates a, a monitor and adjusting in real time. That's important for us to then be able to start catching those things, and then think about, and even in that summer PD area of, okay, what do we need to do different? What do we need a plan for? How do we best communicate where building administrators is there then? Developing their uh, school improvement plans, how do we best support that professional development? Um, I think it also has to do with, we have specific focus areas every year. Maybe we need to look at different focus areas. So that, the accountability piece and the communication loops as well of is what's that lived experience for our students and families and look at that feedback helps to monitor and adjust so that we, we don't totally go off course of our strategic plan. But I'll let that speak to that as well.
I, you did great. I think the only other thing that I would say is that um, the conceptual areas and the broader buckets of work and the goal areas are things that we fully anticipate to be in place throughout the period of the strategic plan. The things that would, we may see um, struggle to attain like our year-by-year annual growth targets, for example, right? Or perhaps our, our, over the course of the four years, we may not quite reach our target. But that's the nature of a stretch goal, right? You're trying to create something that's attainable but difficult, it's not that easy. So we're of course striving to reach that. And then it's the, it's the actual actions and strategies that are in place to try to um, make gains within those goal areas. Those are the types of things that you're probably going to see more mid-course adjustment during the year or from year to year, you might see those list of strategies be different. Like, wow, we thought it would be super impactful to have this person doing this activity, and the data and the student feedback just is not supporting that. So I think we're going to have to try something different here to make gains within X area. Maybe it's attendance, maybe it's participation in extracurriculars, maybe we're not offering the right things. And we need to do a better job of getting voice from students to tell us, what are you interested in doing? It's those types of things that are going to be where you see those adjustments along the way. These are such good questions.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, final important discussion is uh, in your packet, you have a map and a description about a boundary adjustment. Uh, Michelle and Travis, you have something you want to add?
There are some notes in um, situation page under the map that kind of give a good summary of the situation that we're in. Um, it is, yes, oh, thank you. Put some slides together for this. Okay, so our summary there again is kind of described in the situation page. Um, the city of Cornelius met with uh, leadership of both Forest Grove and Hillsborough School Districts to kind of suggest and ask that we consider a voluntary boundary adjustment for development that is um, currently planned for um, the Cornelius Woods area, which is just east of Cornelius Fred Meyer. And it's an L-shaped development with the northernmost northwest corner of it is uh, actually inside the Forest Grove School District currently. You can see that on your map. Um, with the uh, suggestion was that we extend the Hillsborough School District boundary to include that so that all of the neighborhood's kids are going to the same schools. And so um, we have done boundary adjustments in the past. Um, but this one um, is not a land to swap, it's not a property swap, it's a very straightforward adjustment. So we brought it here for your consideration tonight. There's a draft resolution included uh, in the packet, and we'll hope to bring that back for approval next month.
Questions? And Forest, like Forest Grove reached out to us and said, hey, I think this is a good idea, right? That they moved this from them to us.
Yeah, they're actually simultaneously bringing this forward to their board.
Right.
And this is step one, um, is to have uh, the school boards pass resolution, and then it goes to the county for them to actually do the work. They have a pretty robust publication and steps that they have to follow in order to finalize that adjustment. So likely won't be final until February um, or March.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to adopting a resolution next time. Uh, we were at the report section, HEA and HCU, you want to pick out who would like to go first?
Good evening, school board, Chair Watson, Superintendent Ryman, and cabinet members. My name is Alicia Infante, and I am the wellness instructor at Reedville Elementary School. I am proud to be serving as the political action officer for the Hillsborough Classified United. And I just wanted to give you a brief rundown of what that position looks like within the union because we haven't had, from my understanding, a political action officer in the last number of years. And so the role is kind of um, an, an exciting time to kind of hone in on what that entails. So during, so I um, have been with uh, Hillsborough School District since twenty-seventeen. And prior to that, I had subbed with ESS. So for a couple of years, I can confidently say that I had done most classified jobs within the district at many of our schools. During my time with ESS, that was when I fell in love with Hillsborough School District, and I knew that I wanted to make this my home for the long haul and join the union. So I'm not only an employee with HSD, I also am a parent of a fifth grader at Arenco Elementary. And so my vision for this position looks a lot like becoming the eyes and ears for HSD Classified Union when it comes to policy and legislation, local and statewide. I plan to bring important information to our classified families so that they know what their options are when they go to cast their votes, and they can make an informed decision. I also plan to develop relationships with our local and state legislators so that when important factors in education, union business, or other areas that would directly affect classified staff come up, I will be able to bring our union voice to that table to be heard. More exciting news in the last couple of weeks to better do that is that I was selected by, a couple of weeks ago, by the AFT Oregon State Political Organizer and the Executive Council to be a part of their new politi-politic, politics, policy, legislation, and solidarity advisory council, or the PPLS Council for short. The mission is to make the, make guiding decisions around state legislation priorities, recommend candidates for endorsement, and build networks of statewide solidarity. And of course, I, with a handful of other union members who also work in public education in all different areas, will represent the education faction of the council. The purpose is really to prioritize the voices that are active in the front lines on important issues to the executive council. So with that, I'll continue on, here is our monthly union report. Last week, several of our, of our executive board members participated in the classified listening session at Century High School. We were excited to see so many classified staff from throughout the district in attendance at this event. Our staff spoke powerfully about their need for more support from enhanced onboarding processes to additional staff to increased safety protocols that will reduce on-the-job injuries. It is clear that our classified staff love what they do and the communities that they work in. It is also clear that they need more support to continue safely doing the jobs that they love. We want to thank all of the classified staff who showed up and shared their experiences last week. Your voice, our voice matters. To the superintendent and the cabinet, we are grateful for leaders who take the time to listen, and we look forward to seeing positive action to address the concerns brought by our members. Before I close my remarks this evening, I'd like to take a moment to celebrate the efforts of two amazing staff members. Laura Wilson is a wealth wellness instructor, my colleague at Century High School. And she recently started a formal dress landing, lending closet for CHS students. So Laura's idea for the closet grew from a conversation with a student who shared that she would not be attending a school dance because she couldn't afford a dress. The new closet will provide dress clothes to CHS students who want to attend school dances but may not be able to afford the high cost of formal wear. Thanks to Laura for listening and providing a solution that allows all students to look and feel their best at school dances. I also want to recognize Kimberly Harrison from Emily Elementary School. Kimberly is a library and media assistant who has organized a fundraiser with the goal of enabling every student at her school to shop for a free book at the Fall Book Fair. With a student body of more than four hundred and fifty kids, Kimberly is asking for about three thousand dollars to reach her goal. She currently has raised one thousand two hundred and fifteen, and her fundraiser is still accepting donations. Thanks to Kimberly for fostering books ownership for our students and for being part of what makes HSD so great. Every day, there are classified staff throughout HSD who are showing up for our students in incredible ways, just like Kimberly and Laura, and I can honestly say I've witnessed that every day, every day at school. It's an honor to represent them here tonight. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Chair Watson, Vice Chair Pantola, fellow board members, Superintendent Ryman, and administrative leaders. My name is Mary G. Babcock, my pronouns are she/her, and I'm Hillsborough Education Association President. I'm a proud music educator, twenty-seven years, twenty-three of those years were right here in Hillsborough. As we prepare for American Education Week next month, I want to thank all of our educators who worked so hard to include Latin heritage and indigenous people today in their lesson plans. I want to give a shout out to Tamborak and Rosedale's music specialist, Sue Ben Lee, who reached out to me for additional Latin heritage world music support. I was pleased that she developed a beautiful celebration of the culture of Latin music with her students. I want to thank Butter Nut Creek's kindergarten educators, Amy Pritchett, Pritchard, and Christie Hammer for their care and devotion to make their students feel safe and welcome. I particularly enjoyed their table groups. There were bumblebees, carpenter bees, honeybees, worker bees, and even the beejeans. And that was a group in the seventies that sold over two-hundred-and-twenty million records. At the last school board meeting, we heard a parent speak that said, "When teachers are supported, our students are rewarded." What a magnificent statement. Our association appreciates the district's strategic plan, and we hope that we can align with the district by supporting the vision to prepare each student for college, for career, college, and life. Since we last met, I've made visits to the following schools. Hillsborough High Schools, South Meadows Middle School, Brookwood Elementary School, Butter Nut Creek Elementary, Free Orchards Elementary, and Quataman Elementary. So some common themes have emerged among our educators during my visits. Educators want to feel safe, and they want to ensure their students' safety. Educators want a manageable workload so that they can truly get to know value and meet all of their students' needs. Educators want to assist their students' families with care and fidelity to ensure their basic needs are met so our students can truly thrive. How do we ensure our schools' safety? Students and educators deserve to learn and work in a safe, welcoming, and inclusive school environment. We have to address the impact of our students that are highly dysregulated. As professionals and experienced educators, we believe that our students act out to the extremes, to the point of undressing, eloping, violence, and damaging property. But our students are telling us something very important. They are telling us that their needs are not being met. We hope to work with the district to fully support and fully resource our schools that our students and educators can succeed. Another concern is the recent passing of Senate Bill eight nineteen. We are concerned that IEPs are not being met and small groups are not being taught when our most experienced and trained fed educators are working with students who need immediate assistance with the above-mentioned concerns. I hope to impress upon you that this is urgent, that the trauma it causes to others, meaning our educators and students, is very serious and very urgent. Please know that HEA is working hard to resolve these issues via our building reps at the building level. I was relieved to see that some schools are working to address the above-mentioned needs by providing a safe space for students to regulate with dignity. However, this is not relieving our educators' workload, and not all of our, all of our schools have the luxury of additional classroom space. Therefore, I'm constantly being asked by educators who want to know, how will the district ensure their safety? And how will the district ensure their students' safety? How do we make our work manageable? We have to address our class sizes. An elementary educator shared with me that she would love to have small primary class sizes to focus on teaching students how to read so that by the time they're in the third grade, they can focus on reading to learn. I've observed many educators struggling to get their entire class rounded up for morning meetings and read aloud circles due to the lack of physical space. When a class is full of desks with little or no walking room, the concept of circling up is just not possible. I've also witnessed educators relying on natural attrition to ensure everyone gets a seat as they cannot physically fit another desk or seat in their classroom to accommodate the number of students on their roster. We appreciate the bond refurbishments, but many of our overbuilding classrooms simply are not intended for the large class sizes that our educators are experiencing this year. We're concerned with our current grading grades, the ramification that this, that many of our students are not learning the true meaning of a deadline, not to mention the additional workload that is placing on our secondary educators when students turn in amounts of work. We do envision to align with, or what do we envision to align with H D, eight, I'm sorry. What do we envision to align with HSD's plan? Educators want more time than anything to analyze, to analyze their classroom community to make it welcoming and inclusive for all of our students. Educators want time to evaluate and assess their student needs so that they can get to know value and empower every student to achieve their dreams. Educators want to give their best, which means a balance of work and home. Educator-directed time should be just that. Educators feel that it should not be occupied by top-down trainings, school-wide programs, and events which causes them to take work home. When educators are compelled to work through their breaks and family time, they cannot give their students their best, and our students deserve better. Educators want to give their students tools for success by preparing them for real life. When, when students need, oh, we need support of parents, guardians to understand that we will always support our students' social and emotional needs when there are unforeseen circumstances. However, we must hold our students- However, we must hold our students accountable to grading deadlines. We want our students to be prepared for their future career and understand the meaning of real-life deadlines to ensure future job security. We want our students to be prepared for college and understand that a professor can decline grading their work if it's late. We want our students to understand adulting comes with responsibility and utility companies expect to be paid on time. Let's teach these lessons to our students now while they're free so they are truly prepared for career, college, and life beyond H S D. We're in this together with the H S D and we're prepared to do the work with you and we hope that we can get the support our educators and students need and deserve. Thank you.
Uh, now we are at board discussion time and just, uh, before we begin, I want to say how much my heart goes out to the students and families impacted by the tragic events of this weekend. Sorry. You guys are up.
Uh, I'll begin with a serious factor is, uh, when you brought up how they want someone to open up something for getting, having a child have the ability to get a free book from the book fair. And that brought me back to, I believe it was second grade. Um, I was a, I was a big bias of Captain Underpants. I loved Captain Underpants. That was my favorite book. Um, and I was trying to get the new book and I realized that there are kids around me that weren't financially able to, so I, I put my book down and I, I bought a book for a kid, like a classmate of mine. And ever since then of that book fair, I'd ask my mom for extra money. And she'd always wonder why when I come up with just one book in my hand, she's like, "I gave you enough money for like five books. What happened to it?" But I'd always come up with an excuse, so I'm, I'm, it makes me really happy to hear that that's happening to kids that don't really have the ability to get themselves. Um, with the less serious factor, I had my choir concert and I didn't see any of their faces. Yeah, guys, I understand we're all, we all have our own busy lives, but like, come on now. I'm joking. There's, there's always another one, December. And my birthday. Yeah.
It's a choir concert on your birthday?
I wish. But no, that's funny. Um, I also want to appreciate all the work that's being put into this year. Uh, and especially with calendar-wise, people are really overlooking how much thought is put into calendars. And it's such a big part because you're just, you're experiencing it firsthand. But when it comes down to someone that's actually creating the calendar for the rest of us, you don't realize how much kind of stress that is to have to realize the fact that you have to kind of please everybody, but also not please everyone. Like, yeah, that's it.
Yeah, I was very touched by your comment about the student who couldn't even attend the dance because she didn't have a dress. Uh, it just made me feel grateful for, my school has this thing called the Crimson Closet where they give free clothing, free food, free hygiene products, and free suits and dresses for people who can't afford it. It just, you don't know what you have until you don't have it. And it's just, we're lucky for our school to have that opportunity and have the idea that no student has to not go to the dance just because they don't have a dress when we can provide it for them. And it's just, it just made me feel more grateful about my school. And on a less serious note, uh, no scholarships this week. Uh, I just wanted to say it again from my choir teacher, "Come watch our play this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, Love of a Pig, at seven thirty P M." And please actually attend, unlike how, have these concerts.
If you guys go to his concert and not mine, I'm gonna be really mad about that.
Thank you.
Um, this week I really enjoyed hearing the proposed course for the industrial and manufacturing pathway. And I think a big reason for that is because it shows how thoughtful H S D is when it comes to career pathways. I, I think one statistic showed like the increase in the workforce, which is only ten percent, correct me if I'm wrong. But I really like that H S D is thoughtful when it comes to your career pathways because at my previous district, there's only like three solid career pathways and they're all pretty just general. So everybody at school wanted to be a lawyer or a doctor and that was kind of it. So, um, I'm glad we got to hear more about pathways tonight and I'm really excited for everyone who's reading the new pathway and the new course. I wish all the luck for that.
Travis?
Thank you. Um, Saturday night, a student lost his life and another student was injured and, um, we're really grateful that the student who was injured, um, is okay and that the students at that party, um, survived. The loss of life was the loss of a son and a brother for a family, um, that we care about in Hillsborough and it rocked our community. Um, this is gun violence that happened at a party on Saturday night. And our hearts go out to the family of, um, the student who was lost. Uh, we're so sorry for your loss. I also wanted to say thank you to everybody in the community who rallied on Sunday to figure out how to get school back up on Monday. I want to give a shout out to, uh, Carrie Meyer, the principal at Hillsborough High School, and all the stand-up meeting with her staff. And Danny Johnson, who's the leader of our flight team, who with incredible composure, shared the information with their staff, um, shared a message that was to be read to students in their first period class and, um, showed up with food and counselors in the library to make sure that there was a place for folks to go who needed to grieve. And took care of staff and students in the Hill High community. Same thanks I would extend to Roger Will and his team at Liberty High School and Chris Benz and his team at South Meadows where siblings of the deceased student, uh, attend school. Um, I also want to give a thanks to our communications team who on Sunday, within a matter of about an hour, had multi-level bilingual communications ready to go so that we could let everybody in our communities internally know what had happened. And I also want to thank Beth and her team for being able to whip together a press conference for us to be able to communicate with our community on Monday morning. I also want to thank our cabinet team for deploying staff to school. On Monday, we had an increased police presence and an increase of uh, administrators and staff out at our school so that students could see us and staff could see us and they, um, I think to the extent possible, felt safe coming back to school. Um, I also want to report that our Hillsborough Police Department partners are going to follow every lead and tip and rumor um, that they've heard in the last two days in order to figure out what happened on Saturday night and to make some recommendations about how we respond as a community. Uh, because this event rippled in our community and, uh, our police department is active right now. Chasing down information and interviewing literally tens of folks who were at that party and who have information related to what happened. Um, I also want to thank community members for the outpouring of support and sympathy for us. Um, I just want to thank community leaders throughout Hillsborough, also the leaders of other school districts who, who contact other school districts who contacted me personally and us as a team. Also elected officials and families, neighbors who reached out to, uh, offer their support, anything that we need. So I feel like in Hillsborough, we have a community that wraps around us as a school district when something like this happens and I am grateful for that. With that said, um, I have a couple of celebrations to share as well. Um, today we had C T E leaders from the state of Ohio visiting Century High School, Mr. Loun's class, and hearing from Melissa Pendergrass and Claudia Rizzo Mendoza about our apprenticeship program, talking to students who are apprenticing at Jira Semiconductor in Toso Courts, taking back that information to Ohio to influence how they do C T E in their state. I also wanted to thank Francesca Sanapi for facilitating, taking it up. We had sixty-five, sixty-four, uh, staff and leaders, including Yvette Pantoja, attending, taking it up for two days and talking about, uh, educational equity in Oregon's history, uh, specifically around race and equity and social justice. Um, that's a huge deal and a huge investment of time. So thank you Francesca for your leadership. Few of us were able to attend the chain cutting, not the ribbon cutting, but the chain cutting with a giant flamethrower of some kind. P C C Swan Island, uh, they just created a mobile welding lab uh, that's in a giant semi-trailer with multiple welding, um, stalls. And that we think that the first stop of that welding lab is going to be a long stop at, at Liberty High School so that the community can experience P C C's mobile welding lab and turning, uh, students and adults onto the trades. And a, a female student at P C C opened that torch and cut that chain in about half a second in front of a bunch of people who are very wide-eyed because they'd never seen a chain cutting before. Um, but I want to congratulate our partners at P C C and we are, um, so partnered up with them that we show up at their parties and they show up at our parties because our curriculum is so aligned in terms of our C T E programming especially. So thank you, um, to P C C and to our C T E leaders in Hillsborough. Beth already talked about the sign. This kickoff event was incredible and none of us knew that people would actually sign the sign. So please celebrate that. And then around the room, you can see we've cleaned up the walls and we've put our "No Value and Empower Every Student to Achieve Their Dreams" slogan so that we can all memorize that and, um, start this year, um, with our strategic plan. I want to thank Beth and, and, uh, Brooke as well for their presentation. I think it'll make more sense to the board and to the community when we have a, a half a year and a year and two years of data to see the trajectories. What you saw tonight was kind of the baseline. And so I, I loved all the questions and the conversation about how are we going to achieve these goals? I hope that the next time that, uh, Beth and Brooke share, you can see the growth that we've made in this category. So, thank you to them also. I see the rest of my time back to the school board.
Board members' time, uh, we'll go online. Sheen, do you have anything you want to add tonight?
Just want to appreciate all the presentations today, um, and my condolences to, to the, to the family. Yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Monique, anything to add tonight?
Yeah, I'd also like to say thank you for the presentations and, um, thanks to the superintendent for your comments, particularly about the events of this past weekend. Um, it's particularly difficult for the community and especially for the parents involved. And, um, just want to say, um, great to hear the students', um, participation, student rep's participation and their, uh, questions this evening. Thank you and for your input. That's all I have.
You. Erica, anything you want to add tonight?
Um, yeah, similarly, I also want to, um, give my condolences to the family and, um, all the staff that has been impacted by this tragedy as we all have. And I know that our community is a really, um, tight-knit community and that people, um, are supporting the family. And I love hearing about our district and all of the activities that we're doing to try to support the family. I also know there's going to be a lot of fundraisers and, um, activities to help, um, the family during this time. It's a financial hardship. And so, um, I just want to, um, advocate that if you see that information, that, um, you're aware that there's, that there is initiatives to, to help them specifically. I believe this Saturday, there's going to be an event whereby the Hillsborough P D, Plaza to, um, gather funds. So I really am just in appreciation and admiration for our community for coming together. Um, and also just, this is just such a loss for our Hills, Hillsborough High School theater. Um, I know everybody knows everybody, um, in that theater and it just, it is a really difficult time for our community, but I think, again, also, um, leaders from our community and, and, and people that just care about us and our students and, um, are holding that grief for us and with us also. So, thank you.
Nancy, anything to add tonight?
Um, just a few brief things. One, Love of a Pig, this Thursday night at seven P M, please, yeah, yeah. Uh, please tell me the date and the time of the December choir concert so I don't, please make sure to. Life comes at you fast. I just want to say that. Okay. I know, I know. So make sure we get the December one. We won't miss that one. Um, again, it can't be repeated enough. Um, condolences and, and our prayers go out to the family who lost their child. Um, this is another, again, another situation where this community stands out and apart from what we do. Um, so thank you for that. Uh, so excited about the expansion of the C T E pathways, education, and metal welding and fabrication that is like so awesome. It's a lot of fun. That's the point in which I get to go to meetings and I don't even have to brag. Mark and I don't have to brag. Now Beth's not going to have to brag because when you walk on the road and you talk about C T E, everybody looks to Hillsborough. It just, it just makes you feel good. So I'm so thankful, so, so, so thankful for that. Um, still proud of the work done on the strategic plan and sincere thanks to Brooke and to Beth for the presentation today. Um, every time we talk about the, the strategic plan, I remember all the time and the hours and the days at, uh, my son's library at a high school. And, and how much, and how we got from walls and post-it notes and conversations. And I'm, I'm saying this because it really, every time we talk about the strategic plan, I remember all of that. I remember sitting with Principal Timmons and laughing in the library, talking about how we're going to implement this and how we're going to do it. And it's good to see them and, and it's so important. So thank you for the, the questions that have asked me about it because it's real. It takes a lot of work to get to where we were to where we are right now. Not saying that nobody's ever done it before, but it was really awesome to be in front of us. So thank you very much for those questions. And thank you Brooke and Beth for keeping the information coming. Um, and finally, I just want to say it, I mean this, proud to be H S D. Proud to be H S D. No place outside of that to be than H S D.
Briefly on the, the tragic incident that happens, a lot has been said. I want to just thank Travis and Beth and everyone who works with them because I, you know, obviously when I first heard the news, I felt terrible despair over a loss of an infinitely precious human life. But as I continued reading the story, there was a little bit of surprise, I thought to myself. You know, it's interesting, this didn't happen on a school property or during a school day, but eighty percent of the news article and so many different news outlets was about the school and the response. And, um, as I thought about it, I realized that's intentional, that, that we as a school district, even though it didn't happen at a school or around a school, we knew that it would affect our students tremendously. And so we not just put in place plans, which you would expect, but we, uh, intentionally immediately communicated those widely to the community, to families, to students. So they knew that the school would be a safe place physically, but also emotionally for them. And I think that work, uh, getting that word out was really important and valuable. Thank you for doing that. Um, briefly also like to say, um, thank you to our, uh, the new classified union, um, uh, political officer. I very much appreciate hearing that. I think some of the best uh, feedback I have gotten has been from Mary Kay about what's happening in our schools. And I think that, uh, continuing to get more feedback from the classified unions also very really valuable for me. And as a school member, I think it'll be very valuable, uh, for that to be channeled to our, our legislators as well. Um, because, uh, we have so many good things we're doing and want to do, but we have to always make sure that the people on the ground, they feel like they're able to do it, that they have the support they need. And so it's, it's just great to hear that you're getting more people involved in that. So I look forward to working together in the future.
Beth?
Um, I do want to give out my condolences to the family of this tragic, tragic event that happened this past weekend. And I also want to thank the staff, um, all of you, all of your work and your informative, um, slides. Like Travis had mentioned, the last two days I've been with Francesca at Taking It Up and, and I'm very appreciative that you all put that on and the work that goes into it because it is topics that are not easy to talk about. It is a difficult and uncomfortable place to be. And, um, the fact that you provide this for people like you that, you know, needed that. And now my knowledge is a little bit more expanded. I want to take everything that I learned and put that into practice and that hopefully it will make me a better, you know, school board member. So my thank you for that. So I want to thank you for that.
Thanks. One of those rooms that you walk in, that Nancy mentioned, where Hillsborough is a leader in the CTE regards to CTE is at the Oregon School Board Association Conference, which will happen before our next school board meeting. So I hope to see many of you there. If we are fortunate enough to have any of our student representatives participate with us on Friday, I think you have the day off, so we won't have a board meeting between then. Let's, I'm sure Rose has already figured out how we coordinate to make sure you can ride with whomever's going down there if you want. So I know I'll be going Friday, so if, yeah, so if there's a way we can help with transportation or anything, let's get that all figured out. Thank you to my board colleagues. It's been a rough few days. Today included, frankly. So thank you for all the thoughtful work you guys do and time you give to the schools. I am on the, on a personal level, I'm on the cusp of becoming a permanent Hillsborough resident, like any minute now. The nomadic nature of my journey is coming to an end, I believe. Probably before Thanksgiving, I think we will move into what I hope is my permanent address for a long time. So yes, proud to be HSD, and with that comes a lot of pride in Hillsborough itself. And this is kind of a weird perspective, but it's kind of my perspective. Born in Chicago, raised in Chicago area, I would say I'm still, and worked in the news business for a long time. So I'm still grateful to live in a place where we cover a shooting and right away, as opposed to figuring out which shootings are worthy of news coverage. So I'm still very grateful to live in a place like that. And I know all of the Diamondback players who played in Hillsborough are proud of Hillsborough as well, and I look forward to watching them in the World Series this week, and all the former Hillsborough Hops who will be participating in the World Series. So thank you all for this week, and we are adjourned.
I just want to let everyone know, when it comes to what happened over the weekend, I have a GoFundMe link. Within one day, we've created, raised $13,000 as a community out of $20,000 for his funeral, and I'm actually part of our community. But if, for the GoFundMe, if those created, unless it's already known, I have the link if anyone would like it.
You get that to do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah.